Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council Performing the Housing Functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. First item on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the council at this time? All right. Next item is closed session. I'll have that provided by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. We have six closed-session items this evening. Two are for the airport authority. They are real estate negotiations pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.8. The parcels which are located at the airport are specifically designated on the agenda along with the negotiating parties. In addition, for the City Council, we have four litigation items, all of which pertain to existing litigation under 5495-6.9A of the Government Code. The parties to the litigation, the title of the litigation, and the case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is any reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding the seven o'clock meeting.
All right, we'll now move into closed session. City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Council Performing the Housing Functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, will have any announcements out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. We had six items for closed session, all fully agendized, and there is no reportable action with respect to those items at this time.
All right, now we'll move into our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Pastor Hector Gonzalez from God's Garden Church, and a Pledge of Allegiance by our Police Chief Captain Don Yoder.
May I ask that we bow our heads, please? Our Heavenly Father, I come to you tonight in the name of your precious Holy Son, Jesus, thanking you for allowing us to be here in the City Council meeting. I ask that you'd bless the mayor and the council members, and bless their families as well. And I thank you that they have committed themselves to be servants for our community. I ask that you would help them in their decision-making tonight, and I pray that everything would be done with decency and in proper order. And I give you the thanks and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Coughing) Amen. Happy United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, for nation and our, in whose soul, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a presentation this evening. We're going to have our City Engineer, Sean McGlade, update the council and the public on what's going on with Old Town. Sean?
For a second. I apologize, my screen was blank. Does everybody at the dice have... Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have a short presentation just to basically recap over some of the improvements and some of the planning actions that have been taken by the City, the Planning Commission, Redevelopment Agency, since around about 1995. I've listed them here, and just bear with me, I'll read a little bit of them so that the audience can follow. Starting in 1995, there was a specific plan prepared and adopted, and in the '95-'96 era, there was some actual physical construction out there, the Seventh Street Rehabilitation and Landscaping. And each one of these, I can get into in a little bit more detail in later slides. Towards the end of 1996, then, we had the Veterans Memorial. Then in '98, there was further planning done by the Redevelopment Agency for the Old Town and the Midtown portions. Further construction in 1999 with the Transportation Center on D Street and Sixth Street. And then there was the Old Town Route 66 Arch constructed in 2001. In '02, there was further planning efforts. There was a relaxation on the sign ordinance as it pertained to the specific plan that had been adopted. And then over the next four or five years, there was consultants hired to do strategic planning for the Old Town redevelopment area, culminating in the adoption of that plan in 2007. The Old Town redevelopment area is a lot bigger probably than most people think. As you can see, it extends along Seventh Street from right around the fairgrounds into the area even beyond D Street down to the river, and basically then from 11th Street along D Street National Trails Highway out to around the cement plant. So the Old Town redevelopment area, the actions taken by the Redevelopment Agency after the strategic plan, there was the commencement of the acquisition of some land for assembly purposes so that the parcels, they're generally small parcels in the Old Town area, and for successful redevelopment, it was obvious that those parcels were too small, they needed to be acquired and assembled for future development. Some of the parcels had buildings on them, which many of them have been demolished completely, resulting in, you know, some properties that are, if you like, ready to be assembled and further developed. Focusing on Seventh Street between D Street and Forest Avenue, this seems to be the focus of a lot of attention. And just to pinpoint where the Transportation Center is, the Old Town Arch, and the Veterans Memorial. And getting, well, a recap of the construction projects. One I didn't list earlier was in the period of '93 to '98. There were seven buildings that had seismic retrofit work done, which was grant-funded, I believe. And the Seventh Street Rehabilitation and Lighting and Landscaping through '95 through '96 with the Veterans Memorial, the Transportation Center, and then in 2001, the Old Town Route 66 Arch. The concept of the rehabilitation on Seventh Street was to provide a more pedestrian-friendly Old Town area. And at the time, the concept was to widen the sidewalks, install some landscape, which also created a buffer between the traffic and the pedestrian, made it, again, a more pedestrian-friendly environment. The beautification from decorative streetlights, colored concrete crosswalks, there was street name signs that were redesigned. But the biggest change was that the parking that had already been on Seventh Street at the time was removed, and that's what permitted widening of sidewalks and installation of the landscaping. That parking was replaced by making A Street and C Street one-way with diagonal parking, which allowed the potential shoppers in the Old Town area, the visitors, it still gave them somewhere to park that was convenient and within a short walking distance. What I'd like to kind of demonstrate, if I can find the pointer, this score line along here, you see it continues all the way up, that is the limit of the old sidewalk, that's where the old curb and gutter was. You can see how narrow the sidewalk was, but you can also see where Seventh Street was able to accommodate the parking. And just another view of that, the other thing that we can see here is the colored crosswalks. Back up again. The colored crosswalks, you can see that the street name sign there is, it's unique to this area. The street name signs throughout the rest of the city are white lettering on a blue background. Again, another view of the landscaping, which is right up against the curb and gutter, and that becomes an issue for parking. If parking were to be permitted, it becomes very difficult to get out the passenger side of a vehicle because of the landscaping. You can see the decorative lighting, there is further street name sign on the traffic signal, and the traffic signal poles themselves are painted green, all unique to the Old Town, that's not done anywhere else in this city. Just the Veterans Memorial located at Seventh and Forest, there was, you know, landscaping put in, benches for sitting, drinking fountain, something for, you know, people to be able to enjoy and view the memorial. And another shot of the memorial. The Transportation Center was constructed in 1999, and it comprised of more than just the building itself, with the park-and-ride facility, the bus station that accommodates the both Greyhound and Victor Valley Transportation Authority, the compressed natural gas refueling station, the sheriff substation, and a taxi stand. And this basically is an aerial view, it's a very elongated site. The Transportation Center, taxi stands are along here, this is the transfer point for the buses, and then parking for the Transportation Center. All of the area down here is for the park-and-ride and the compressed natural gas refueling stations here. And then in 2001, I believe there was grant funds for the construction of the Old Town Route 66 Arch, but I was unable to recover the records to identify what that grant source was. The questions that have come up most recently regarding the issues in the Old Town area, I'll be dealing a little bit with number one and number two, the signs and the parking. I'll also address the speed question that has also come up. I think three, four, and five are something that council needs to evaluate, and certainly there are staff members here that can probably answer any questions related to those. The easiest question, if you will, to address is the request for signs. The cost is minimal. In reviewing the signage along Seventh Street that depicts where that off Seventh Street parking is, the side street, A and C, in its redesign to be more unique to the Old Town, I think it's lost its, I guess, visibility, if you will. People normally look for a parking sign that looks like the one on the slide, that's not what it looks like in Old Town, and we would recommend that we supplement, if not replace, the existing parking signs with signs such as the standard signs indicating free parking or free public parking, and I certainly think that will help some of the issues. No loitering, that's something that we don't have a problem with. I would basically deflect that to the police chief as to, you know, what laws would apply, but certainly Public Works staff can install those signs without much cost or problem. Tourist information signing, that is certainly something that if we want to direct tourists that are exiting the freeway and coming along D Street, that is in countering jurisdiction, there will need to be permits obtained for that. Again, I don't think it's a huge cost, but I think there needs to be further discussion about the, where the information is going to be available. There was discussion of whether it should be at the Route 66 Museum, the Transportation Center, both, or some other place, but that's something that I'm sure can be worked on. I want to go back to the parking on Seventh Street, the issues that come up, they, back in '95-'96 when the work was done on the pavement, the entire Seventh Street from Green Tree to D Street was rehabilitated with a federal grant under the ICE-T program. And it is typical that grant money is invested, especially federal grants, the expectation is there would be a 20-year life associated with that grant investment. Being that that was done in '95-'96, we haven't exhausted those 20 years yet. That grant was intended to provide rehabilitation for a road that is listed under the Federal Aid Urban Program, and it's for an arterial road, four lanes. So if parking were to be reinstated on Seventh Street, it would cause the lanes to reduce from four to two, and that may put the city in jeopardy of having to refund some portion of the federal funds. It's going to cause traffic congestion, there's no question about that, there's 13,000 vehicles per day that travel on Seventh Street. The planning into the future certainly gave credence to a different traffic pattern which would divert some of the traffic from Seventh Street, but that's very, very expensive to do, and at this stage, that's really not in a foreseeable future. And as I mentioned earlier, parking on Seventh Street today without spending a whole lot of money to deal with that landscaping, it is actually quite difficult to exit a vehicle if you park adjacent to the curb with the landscaping where it is today. Some of these costs, parking in other places, there's a potential that that could be funded from an improvement district, something similar to what Town of Apple Valley did with their village area. Just to, again, pinpoint the challenges with parking on the street, on Seventh Street, that lane that you see adjacent to the curb is somewhere between 15 to 16 feet. The standard width for a curb lane where parking is permitted is 20 feet, so that would be deficient, and you can get a good idea of how difficult it would be to get out of the vehicle with the kind of landscaping that is along Seventh Street at that point. This is an excerpt from the strategic plan which does look at various scenarios. This is the scenario where, that we have today, there's four travel lanes but no parking. The other scenario that is presented in this strategic plan does show parking with only two lanes of traffic, but there is obviously another project that would need to be put in place to accommodate the traffic, both today's traffic and looking into the future, to take it away from Seventh Street. There's a fairly heavy Seventh Street right turn onto D Street movement that would need to be accommodated. Some of the suggestions is that it goes along Forest, onto Hasbury Road, and then Hasbury Road onto D Street, but that is a major cost item. Some of the suggestions for parking, this is one location at Forest and Seventh, that's the former Greiner Pontiac Car Dealership. That building isn't there anymore, this aerial photograph was taken prior to the demolition. I think Mr. Metzler is going to have to address the disposition of redevelopment-owned properties. I'm just not believing that that is something that, unless the city buys it from the Redevelopment Agency, I don't see how that can become a parking area for the Old Town. Another location suggested was to do some paving at Forest Park. From an engineering standpoint, it doesn't make a lot of sense to attract people to an area and have them park on the other side of a state highway. In the entire city of Victorville, the highest pedestrian accident picture that we have is right here, and I feel that it's inappropriate to try and attract visitors to the area and put them in a parking lot and then ask them to cross D Street, a state highway. It's also been talked about, the speed on Seventh Street is too high. A lot of people don't know this, but the city does not just simply set speed limits. There is a process that engineering staff goes through to find out what is the prevailing speed on any street. It is the 85th percentile of the surveyed vehicles, meaning that 15% are assumed to go at a speed that is above what is reasonable and prudent for the given conditions. That means that we have a very narrow window of adjustment, we establish that, for Seventh Street it's 37 miles per hour, we can legally post it at 35 miles per hour, it is enforceable, meaning the sheriff can write speeding tickets, but we cannot arbitrarily reduce the speed limit and have it still enforceable, it would just not be enforceable. And enforcement is, from studies, has been shown to be the most effective way of controlling speed. What we do think may help is the, you know, there's new technology that has a built-in radar and a sign, and you have your, approaching vehicle speed is displayed. That has an effect of causing people to slow down. The difficulty in that area of Seventh Street is it's in the vicinity also of a school, and where you would normally put the speed limit is 25 miles per hour, or 35 miles per hour, whatever the posting is, in the vicinity of a school, that does change. When children are present, it is 25 miles per hour, otherwise it's 35 miles per hour. So we think we can find a way around that, and that, there is a cost to that of the, in the order of $7,000 to $8,000. If we were to move forward with that, that's something we would need to take back to council and have some allocation of funds. The, you can see that, you know, D Street, it's a very, very busy street today in 2012, quite a different picture from 1940. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions, and hopefully other staff members if it's something I can't address.
How much is at risk for reimbursement?
The, if we were to be...
If we were to make that parking, you said that we'd be at risk at reimbursing, I think it was the state? it was the state or RDA?
The funds that we obtained were federal transportation funds through the ICE-T program. Believe it was around about $1.2 million. I can't imagine that they would want $1.2 million back. I would think that they would prorate it in some way. We have asked questions of Caltrans, and we're not getting very good, clear answers. It's just, the people that we're talking to, they are of the opinion that we would have to refund money.
You had mentioned that there was not, it was short a few feet to have parking, and then it would be reduced down to two lanes. Would it be a possibility to have some sections one-way?
On Seventh Street? I think it defeats the purpose of the arterial. The arterial is intended to be a four-lane street that connects to major thoroughfares. I mean, physically, yes, there could be something like that done, but as far as meeting the intent of the grant funds, I'm not sure that it would.
I think the intent of the grant funds is different than the intent of the business owners. I think what they want to do is get people to slow down and notice them and shop in that area.
Yes, I understand.
So, would that be a possibility, or would that cause other issues?
Well, as I said, I think there's the risk of having to repay funds because it's not performing as an arterial street. In order to convey 13,000 vehicles per day, there would need to be other improvements done elsewhere to accommodate that traffic. Because a vast majority of that traffic is through traffic. And the way that would be done, you know, some of the suggestions would be to divert traffic onto Forest off Seventh Street. But in doing that, we're probably gonna, I would say we would definitely need a traffic signal at Forest and Hisperia Road because there's going to be a very heavy left turn. And then as you progress down Hisperia Road to D Street, that's only a two-lane road. And that's already heavily loaded, it's a truck route. Yes, there's a signal there, but it's very, very narrow there. And if we were to divert a lot more traffic onto that, we would need to do widening there.
I think what he's trying to say is it's possible, but it's really not feasible with the amount of traffic that's currently on that road.
So, do you have any suggestions at all to make it a little bit better for the business owners? That would be feasible?
Well, I think one of the problems seems to be not being able to park near the business. What is out there is maybe not well-publicized, if you will. The side streets have diagonal parking on them. They're one-way streets. That allows someone, if they pass by a business, if they know that they can park very close nearby, then they'll be able to get to that business easily. I don't think people are noticing the parking. That's why I was talking about the parking sign itself is non-standard. It's not a, the signs that are out there today. What I would recommend is that we put in signs that everybody, it's an international symbol, as to where to find parking.
Sean, thank you for your presentation.
I have a comment, and I know that, you know, we've been working on this for years and years. And I have been an advocate of parking on Seventh Street. But again, we get, we have these challenges of doing that. You know, having to pay back the federal funds that we used to improve that, and then, of course, the landscaping that would have to be redone. But every Old Town that I've been, and, you know, you have parking, you know, on the street. And yeah, traffic slows, so they can, as they're slowing down, they can see, and maybe they'll recognize the storefronts they may want to buy from and stop. So I don't, you know, I understand the challenges. Other than providing parking in the back, and I don't know if we have enough land, city own land, you know, to do that. But definitely, I understand the need for that, because I see it in other places that have Old Towns, or, you know, where you have shopping and people slowing down, you know, and that's the way you get them to stop. And I understand that if they're going down Seventh Street, they're not going to stop. So, it is a dilemma.
I just, this past weekend, happened to be in Redlands, went to visit their Old Town area. And that concept works beautifully there, because immediately adjacent and parallel to it is the arterial road. The challenge with Seventh Street, it's both the arterial road and the intent is to have it be the Old Town. And that combination is what causes the challenges. There's, in Redlands, there's on-street parking, it's, you know, stamped, concrete paving. There's trees and landscaping and benches to sit, and it is a very nice feel about it. But parallel to that is where the major traffic volume is.
Councilmember Cabral, us and the remaining members of the council. When we had redevelopment authority, and Sean alluded to it briefly in his presentation, we did undertake a lot of acquisitions in Old Town, largely because we had a strategic action plan, where we brought in professional planners and land use team that had experience in redeveloping downtowns. And they actually gave us some very clear direction as to what we should do. One of those things was to assemble as much property as we possibly can, because the parcel makeup in that area, the parcels were so small, to do anything meaningful in terms of redevelopment or some type of development would require more property. And actually identified the property makeup largely as a hindrance to any type of development or new development. So we had actually acquired a lot of property down there. And thinking about the existing makeup and maybe trying to address your immediate question with respect to parking, one of the things that I think we can probably do is point out the parking that we have available today. I'm not necessarily convinced that the parking we have available today is adequate, especially if we do see more intense retail uses going along the commercial corridor. The acquisitions that we did undertake as the RDA had in mind a much different thought. In fact, one of the visions that was being developed was a vision that really tried to create more of a mixed-use retail environment along the corridor, and that's largely why we had bought the properties that we'd bought down there. You know, not being able to immediately fulfill some of the visions that we had developed, especially as a part of our preliminary specific planning efforts, there is property owned down there that I guess, in theory, could be, and even in practice, could be used on a temporary basis to help create more parking, if, you know, there was certainly a need for that. Would have to be pointed out, and if I had to generally illustrate where it'd be, it'd be along Eighth Street and probably the Forest area. But that could be used to help satisfy some of those commercial needs along Seventh. The major pitfall, the major challenge we're going to have is that all of those properties are owned or were owned using the RDA's name. And with the dissolution that's in place, the properties that were acquired will effectively have to go through a dissolution process. Now, we don't exactly know what that's going to look like, or how the dissolution process is going to be defined exactly. However, what we do know is that those properties have to be sold. Not even sure exactly how we establish value on those properties. Some even have environmental issues to overcome. But I guess the point with bringing that up is, certainly, we take direction from this council, and if the council believes that parking is needed more so on the near term, you know, an option to you is to consider acquiring some of those properties through the dissolution process. I haven't thought about the funding source or even what it would cost, but that might be something worth exploring if there was some type of short-term goal that the council would like to achieve using those properties for parking.
Well, thank you, Mr. McLeod, Mr. Metzler. I think that this issue is going to be an ongoing discussion. I don't know that we can solve all those issues here tonight. But one thing that I do know, and I think going to your point, in Redlands, my wife is from Redlands, I do spend significant time down there, is the fact of the matter is, is because they have on-street parking, diagonal on both sides, there is nothing more but to slow people down. And so, when you speak to the issue of speed limits, if you reduce the number of lanes, you put diagonal parking on Seventh Street, the requirement for people to slow down will create itself. So I think that, you know, I'm not an engineer like you, Sean, but the fact of the matter is, is that that's the only way you're going to slow people down. Otherwise, they're just going to blow right by Seventh Street and get to D Street, and they're either going to Apple Valley, or they're going to the freeway. And so I think that the only way we can slow people down is to get on-street parking. I think it needs to be the diagonal-type parking. But obviously, the only way we're going to accomplish some of those things is through the issues that Mr. Metzler brought up tonight. So, I would expect that this would be an ongoing discussion. I don't think we can solve it here tonight, but I think there's enough interest on this council to look at that issue on a go-forward basis.
And if I might, just to address that in favor of the benefit of the public, we actually did look at models that did do that as part of some of our specific planning efforts. One of the things that we learned in trying to diagram putting parking on Seventh Street, you're right, it would slow down traffic, might even back up traffic. I think, like water flows, traffic can flow as well, is kind of how we use analogy to describe it. But what we were finding is that there were likely going to be required some substantive mitigation measures, such as providing alternative routes off of Seventh Street, because there's likely going to be a traffic that doesn't want to deal with that slowing down and wants to bypass it. So, the things that we did look at is upstream, if you will, or to the south, having to provide alternative routes so that somebody could get to Hisperia Road a lot quicker that did not want to mix with the traffic going through the heart of the Old Town area. And that becomes problematic, because some of those routes that would effectively get you to Hisperia Road, they're not adequately sized. In fact, there, some of them that we looked at that were the most likely that could help were roads that had predominantly residential stemming off both sides of the road. So the point is, a lot of those roads would have to be widened, and there might even have to be acquisitions necessary to get the right roadway widths to allow for that divergence of traffic away from Old Town. So, we had looked at it, but, you know, putting parking on Seventh Street just started creating some upstream issues that was going to require additional attention and perhaps even money and expense. And Mr. Mayor, additionally, I've been in contact with Ms. Barbara Powers, who's heading up the Old Town Business Owners Group, and I'm going to be meeting with them in the near future. I don't think it's quite scheduled yet. And then, as necessary, we've offered staff members, if they have specific issues they want addressed, if it's a planning-related issue, we'll send somebody from planning. If it's a facilities-related issue, we'll send somebody to discuss those issues with those business owners, which, that was somewhat what spurred into the whole discussion on Old Town.
Is there anything that we can do tonight to at least move forward with the signs that Sean was talking about?
We're actually already moving forward with that.
Oh, okay.
The parking signs, we're going to be either adding or changing. I didn't even know there were parking signs down there. They are apparently nice-looking Old Town signs, but they aren't particularly noticeable as a result of that. So we're going to go to the big blue sign with a P that says parking, that's very obvious. And also, we're going to be looking at the no-loitering sign, and then I'll be speaking with the Business Owners Group about how exactly they, or we, or we together can apply for that Caltrans permit regarding the visitor information sign.
And then what about the speed limit, reducing it?
That is not something we can arbitrarily reduce or change that sign. I've been talking with Sean a little bit about the sign that displays your speed, and hopefully we'll be able to come up with a few thousand dollars to put one of those in, assuming we can get past the issue with the school zone.
Okay.
All right, so this discussion will be ongoing, I would imagine, and thank you, Sean, for your short presentation. All right, now we will have our city clerk present the agenda to the council.
City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is a time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There is just one item that is requested as a revision tonight, and that is concerning public hearing items 11 and 14. After testimony is taken on these items, it is requested that these hearings be continued to April 17th. Those are all the revisions I have. Mayor McEckern.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into public comment. And just to be clear, I do have several cards here this evening, but the only two cards I have under public comment, there are several for agenda item number 11, and even more for agenda item number 13. Just to be sure, I will only call the two cards that I have under public comment, and then we will move on to the rest of the agenda. The first card under public comment is Gloria Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilwoman Enjol Valles, and council members. My name is Gloria Garcia. I'm a lifelong resident of Victorville. I know that we can never go back in time or have things the same way it used to be. However, as Old Town, as far as Old Town, I remember how nice and easy life used to be here. Your presentation, your segment was excellent. It really touches my heart. Back in the years when I was growing up, D Street was the main part of town, and the park on D Street was a gathering place for families. Through the years, the Old Town has become a haven for drugs, prostitution, and everything else that is illegal. We know that Old Town will never go back to what it used to be. However, with the Old Town Committee, property and business owners, the city and churches getting involved and working together, it is possible to get rid of the bad and bring life back into the downtown area. My suggestion is, let's make Victorville, Old Town, a place where the high desert began its history, a part of Victorville that will attract tourists, and a place to be proud of. It will not be easy, but if we don't start now, it will never happen. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Raymond Herrera.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmember Angela. My name's Raymond Herrera. I'm president and founder of We the People California's Crusader. For everybody listening, my website is CaliforniasCrusader.com. Go to it. Mayor, I have several issues I'd like to talk with you about, and the first one, actually to everybody, is the celebration of Hispanics or Latinos on American soil through venues such as May 5th, or better known as the fallacy known as Cinco de Mayo. It's not even celebrated in Mexico. I'm 62-years-old, I was raised as an American of Mexican descent, not Latino, not Hispanic. I think it's ludicrous for my American counterparts to sponsor racist, divisive organizations such as the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and their event Cinco de Mayo that celebrates some of their ethnicity, some of their culture unknown to the American people. I, like you, am an American, not German, not Anglo, not Irish, Mexican, but an American. So I've kind of taken it back a little bit by, you know, to want the American people to celebrate such a falsehood as Cinco de Mayo. It's as bad as Caesar Chavez. Put yourself in my position. I'm an American, you know, pretty, well, you know, when I look at Caesar Chavez, he's a great picker, a union organizer for great pickers, a small segment of the work sector, an even smaller segment of the population, and quite frankly, an embarrassment to me. Caesar Chavez is a nobody. I can't think of one American of Mexican descent that has a portrait of Caesar Chavez on their wall, a Mexican flag for Cinco de Mayo, or Mexico on their mind. We're Americans just like you. It's a fallacy to, and racist to elevate Latinos and Hispanics over We the People. A naval ship named after Caesar Chavez, why? In the name of diversity and multiculturalism, it's a divisive, it's a divisive weapon against the American people. We're not peoples, we're one people. Furthermore, to the people of Victorville, I am a political activist, and I rail against illegal aliens on behalf of the American people and the American culture. May 5th, on Bear Valley, in front of their event, I will hold an American flag rally. If you want to learn about Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, the American culture, come visit me, we can talk about it all day. Just like I tell you, you know, I look at you people up there, I see every ethnicity up there, and I'm just kind of quite offended that you want to tell me mine. I'm a proud American, as my father. Celebrate him, celebrate my mother, celebrate our fathers and our mothers that are Americans of Mexican descent. Latinos and Hispanic is a myth.
Thank you. All right, again, those were the only two cards I had under public comment. Again, I have several cards under Agenda Item Number 11 and Agenda Item Number 13. So with that, we'll move on to our library board of trustees. We do have a consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
All right, for the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, the Joint Powers Financing Authority, there were no items at time of posting. So moving on to the Victorville Water District, this is a public hearing and companion item to City Council, Item Number 14. Public hearing called to hear arguments for and against the adoption of rates of water services as set forth in Resolution Number VWD-12-002. Again, we have been informed tonight, the staff is requesting a continuance on this item to April 17th, most notably due to the fact that we have the absence of one council member here tonight. So I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I have four cards on this agenda item. The first one is Nora Miller. And Dorothy, you are right behind him, if you would like to follow him down.
Mayor, council members, I'm a little disturbed about what's going on here. First off, you took $20 million out of the Water District. How much of that was from the Baldi Mesa? Was there a percentage, one way or the other? Doesn't matter. My point is, you took that money away from the Water District. Now we have to raise the rates for the Water District? In other words, you want us to pay for your folly with the wastewater project on the base? And I don't think that's right. You've taken a lot of money out of the Golden Triangle. We had money for roads, you wanted to use it on the bridge. I'm all for the bridge, but I'm not for taking the money out of the Golden Triangle to pay for the bridge. We need our roads fixed in the Golden Triangle, especially Bear Valley Road. It's a washboard between Amethyst and going down to Amagosa. It's almost as, you need a four-wheel-drive vehicle to drive it, an off-road vehicle to drive that. I don't think that's right. So I'm against the raise. If you don't have the money, then don't do it. When I run out of money, I don't do things. I don't go to my neighbor and tell him I want some more money, or I don't go to my parents and tell them I want some more money. I wait, and I think the city needs to do the same thing. We're all in a hole, they might say. The city is hurting, the public is hurting. Let's not make it worse for the public, make it worse for the city. You've got money, maybe not all you want, but you've got money. And if you can't do anything, you don't need to do a lot of improvement right now, because there's nothing going on, anyway. And if you need the money, get it out of the wastewater. That's where our money went, and is it ever going to come back from the wastewater district? Can anybody answer that? Or is it going to be another write-off, like before? I know you guys weren't all there before, but you are there now, and I don't think it's fair at all that you take the money. And one example of saving money, I got two notices yesterday about changing the billing and the numbers. Why couldn't you put that into our water bill and save the postage? It's not much, but every little bit helps. That's what I do. If I have to go someplace, I go to two or three places to save gas. I don't just go one time, this next time, the next time. I used to, but now I can't afford to. So I think you guys need to look the same way. Thank you.
Dorothy Miller.
There's been several problems with this whole situation. Both Water Districts had money. They had to borrow it for the treatment plant out at the base. We're supposed to get paid back, but I know we won't. Now we want to sell that water treatment plant to VWDRA. Now, wait a minute. You're going to raise my rates and everybody else's rates, and then turn around and sell that, and we're going to be paying, paying, paying for what? It's not right. What has happened here is not right at all. I mean, both Water Districts, and if somebody had sit down and take a look at that, what money they had and what they didn't have, you'd find out. We're paying for a water treatment plant. You know what? Victorville, over at the tanks on Amagosa and Sycamore, has hooked up into that tank and run it up to our treatment plant, and we're paying for it. They're not paying anything. We pay standby fee. That's not right. Everybody should pay the same thing. I've got up here, I've told you this, and I've told you this. It should all be the same. Things are not being done the same, and we are getting took, and I don't like it one bit. And I got bills. I've had bills and bills, and there's two different pieces of property, they're the same property, but they're two different buildings, and we get extra bills. Why can't we put it all in one bill? We don't have to send all this extra stuff. We need to save money and stop charging the people. And I don't want to see this water rate go up, or you're going to hear a lot from me, and you'll probably see a lot more about it. Thank you.
Datis, I'm sorry, I can't even pronounce his name. Biaras? Not even sure. On Agenda Item Number 11, it says D-A-T-I-S?
I received in the mail a letter from the water company of Victorville. I am a landlord, rental properties, and from what I'm understanding from this letter is that property owners will now be charged with collecting water bills. For myself, I have problems collecting rent, but according to this letter I received in the mail here, which says owner's responsibility. I know probably about a year ago, I had a tenant move out, move across the street. He left the balance on his water bill, but he had water turned on across the street. When I went to turn the water on, the water company wanted me to pay what he left, but they turned the water on for him across the street, but they didn't collect from me. They said I would have to pay it, which I have to buy a license to rent houses in Victorville, which I have a license for that. But I don't have a license to collect for water. So my question is, how do I get on the payroll for collecting water bills? Since this is, from what I'm understanding, the only option that I have is, if I'm going to rent a house, I've got to pay a water bill, which I tried to turn the water off, which I got a bill for three months. For some reason, nobody, myself, other tenants, had not been billed. But when I got the bill, I went down to turn the water off. Nope, somebody lives there, you can't turn the water off. I can't turn it off, but I'm responsible for it. I've got to keep paying it. As long as somebody lives there, I've got to keep, that's according to this letter. I've got to keep paying the water bill, because I can't shut it off, because somebody lives there. So if he turns it on, he quit paying and lived there forever and not paying, according to this letter, which I read up. Which I think is wrong. I think landlords are being held hostage, and I think we need to rethink, we look at this letter, because all I can get out of this is that if I don't pay the bill and let him live there without paying it, then you want my house, with tax money. That's what I'm promised. I don't find anything right enough. And so I talked to the manager at the water company, and he said that's what I'm stuck with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Basically, what Otis said goes for me, too. I have rental houses in the area here in Victorville, and basically, like he says, we're being held as hostages, basically by tenants. If they decide not to pay a water bill and just leave water run, then we're the ones that's stuck with the bill that we didn't really make. So I hope you consider what you're saying here. Thank you.
All right, that's all the cards I have on this agenda item. We will continue this item to April 17th, 2012. I would encourage the landlords and those investors in our community who do not live here to engage with those that do live here. We are being asked to raise rates for the very reason that you're complaining before this council, that we ought not to charge you. Logically, that doesn't make any sense. I am not going to vote to raise rates on any occasion, I never will. But I think it's important that we point out that it's due to the large investor population in Victorville that owns homes, rents them out, to people who don't pay the bills, that are now causing staff to come back to this council to ask us to raise rates. It is the investor community that's causing this problem. It is not the people that live here. People that live here, that own homes, pay their water bills, pay their trash bills, pay their sewer bills. And the people that you rent to, unfortunately, are not paying their bills, and because of that, I've got staff coming to this council, asking us to raise rates. It just doesn't make any sense. So for those of you that own properties in Victorville but don't live here, I'd encourage you, be more attentive, be more interactive with your tenants, because unless they pay their bills, this is exactly what this council is going to be asked to do on a go-forward basis. And although I won't vote for it, I can't speak to what the rest of my colleagues will do, but it's frustrating that we're even being asked to do that, and I have people that own homes in Victorville but don't live here, coming before this council, asking us not to do this, and not to hold them accountable for the very people that live in the homes that they rent out to them. I'm sorry, but as owners of properties in Victorville, you are accountable, and you must be accountable. So I cannot go back to the voters of this city and say, "I had to raise rates," because I have outside investors who didn't want to be accountable and wanted us to give away free water. Water's not free, folks. Water is the most precious commodity that we have in the high desert, and there's no way that I'm going to give it away. All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar under the Victorville Water
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
There were no items at the time of posting for the City Council performing housing functions, the former RDA. So we'll move on to the City Council. This is a continued appeal hearing to hear arguments for or against granting or denying the appeal, Appeal N. 11-00015, by adopting either Resolution Number 12-009, denying the appeal, or Resolution Number 12-009, granting the appeal. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 13. Is there any presentation by staff before we get into that?
There is not. Staff's available for questions. The city attorney may have something if there's questions as well.
All right, I have several cards on this, and what I would ask those that wish to speak to the council on this item is that we not rehash or regurgitate the information or the public testimony that's been provided to us at the Planning Commission level. There have been several public hearings on this item, and I don't wish to have the council have to rehear that. What I would like to hear tonight from those that are here to testify on this item is, why did the Planning Commission error in its decision twice? That is the key to this council's decision tonight, and that's what I feel that this council needs to hear. So with that, I will start with the first card I have, Vicki Mack.
Mayor McEckernan, if I might, while they're coming to the podium, we do-
Mayor McCaughern, if I might, while they're coming to the podium, we do also have an additional agenda item on the podium, which is some additional information, some additional letters for your consideration that will be included as part of the administrative record.
Yes, and I will acknowledge as well, as well as the rest of the council, that we have received those letters.
Hi. My name is Vicki Mack, and I am a lifelong resident of the city of Victorville. And I'm also a convicted felon with a 10-year criminal history. In 2005, with the help of Victorville Probations Drug Court, I got sober. I am clean and sober with over seven and a half years of sobriety. Since I've graduated from drug court, I've returned to college, and I've obtained my bachelor's degree in sociology, with plans to go to USC to complete my master's degree in social work. I've given over 500 hours of volunteer service with a local nonprofit agency. I've been able to support this agency by writing over $25,000 worth of grants to help this nonprofit agency continue their public service efforts. Had I not believed that it was possible to rehabilitate, and had I not believed in this community's readiness to accept me once I demonstrated that I could change, and once again become a contributing member of this society, I might still be on drugs, I might still be committing crimes, I might still be in and out of jail, and I might still be a part of the problem rather than a part of the solution. And I'm, I'm not alone. I don't think that it's realistic to expect that every probationer or parolee will take advantage of the rehabilitation opportunity. I understand that it is not the community's responsibility to give people like me a chance, but it is the responsibility of people like me to prove that we deserve a chance. I want to ask, though, you know, at what point do me, do I and people like me cease to become criminals, cease to become ex-felons, and, and become community members again, become citizens? I respectfully submit to you that as the city's fathers, and I don't know if I'd call you a mother or not, that you set the tone, and you are the example for the citizens of this community to follow. And if you take an antagonistic stance towards people who obviously do have problems, but you know, want to change, that it's counterproductive to the goals of community wellness. I believe that the contributions of people who are ready to change far outweigh the detractions of those who aren't. And there are people out there who want a chance, they want an opportunity. And I think that for this reason, the Planning Commission erred. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicki. I was actually going to just ask you to get to that point, but you did, so thank you for that. And again, three minutes, I'm going to adhere to this because I have several cards, so three minutes per person.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I must have talked too long in your office that day, Mr. Mayor. I tried to keep it short. Thank you all for the opportunity. I've had the opportunity to speak to some of you personally in several meetings at our State of the City address. And I think, in having been at that last Planning Commission and spoke, where they erred is they kept citing two issues. One was safety. And in law enforcement, in my 25th year, and I'm sure Captain Yoder will agree with me, we can't prevent every crime. But moving to that building on Sage allows me to say to you, I have 75 armed probation officers going in and out of that community, in and out of that neighborhood, more directly. The other thing that I think the Planning Commission missed is my POs are trained, just like our sheriff's department. In fact, we took the training model when we became Durham 15 years ago, and we modeled it after the sheriff's training. In fact, they were the ones that trained us. So I know how qualified we are. The other issue was, we don't fit over there. And that is disturbing because some of the things that were said, they brought me back to early lessons as a child, back to Somme, Alabama, when people would say things like, oh, those people are right, I just don't want them in my neighborhood. And it was said to us in that direct manner by the Planning Commission. It was said to me several times in private conversations, you know, we understand what you're going to do, you know you have great pride, Leo, just not over there. And I think that's wrong, to take fine people like Vicki and the people I've spent my life, 25 years, working with. The other thing is the history lesson, and I think Mr. Rothschild and I, being students of history, will appreciate the fact that in 1985, when we left the courthouse, we moved to Civic Drive. And that seems to be a presentation in front of the Planning Commission also, that had we known they were there, well, I was a young rookie back then, and I remember looking off that balcony, and the only office I could see at the time was a man who actually took me under his wing, and I miss to this day dearly, and it's our old friend, Tony Piazza, who was the city manager here at one time. And the lessons that Judge Piazza taught me as a young PO are valuable, and I present those very quickly to you tonight, that he, he had a vision for our city. And in that vision, he saw us as, well, the slogan at the time was the key city of the desert, but he saw us as a great metropolitan center here, doing great things. And not just being that doorstop on the way to Vegas, but Victorville was going to be big, and Tony had that grand vision. And Tony, and I never took this advice, and I should have years ago, talked to me, and he said, you should go talk to this man. And he described a man who came from the Coachella Valley, who came from blue collar, hardworking, Mexican-American stock, just like me, Mejama Leovardo Frederico Espinoza Steger. And he talked to me about that man. And he said, that man has worked his way through the ranks, and we stole him here in Victorville, and he's our fire chief now. And as a young PO, I made that mistake, Mr. Cabrealis. I should have came and talked to you then. But you, you were somebody I've looked up to in this community, along with Felix Diaz. You were my role models as a young PO. And I say to you that the Planning Commission missed out on the fact that it's not for the minority of the few lawyers that have offices there and what they want to do. We're looking at the greater good for our community as a whole and what we bring as a probation department. Vicki's just one of many. And I could have lined them all up tonight, but I know we're on short time. I got the assignment, ladies and gentlemen, that I talked to three of you about. After the Planning Commission, about two days later, I got the call from my deputy chief, and he told me, Leo, you are rehabilitation and probation. We're going to give you this assignment to create the DRC. I am thrilled. I don't care where I create it. I'd like to create it on Sage Street because I know I can use that building to its utmost purpose. And in closing, I'd like to thank Ms. Hart, Ms. Hart who owns that building, who has held her hand out to probation, saying let's partner up. It's a business deal, but it's much more than that. She's taken the time to learn all that we're going to do. My 75 officers are willing to keep the neighborhood safe. I promise you that. We fit in because we have a government center right across the street, and we want to be a part of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leo. Ricketts, do Leo?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, how are you? Leo is the perfect example of the type of staff that we have in Victorville. As deputy chief of the probation department, I'm proud to, for him to be part of our team. And these are the kind of, as the lady spoke, these are the kind of things that we want to do with the rest of the AB 109 population, to provide those resources for them. You asked the questions where the Planning Commission erred. We provided the Planning Commission with a lot of information that corrected some of their, the misinformation that was placed in the documents. The issue of safety was brought up. There's never been any evidence, there's never been any record, there's never been any arrests near the probation department, Civic Drive, where one of our clients committed a crime. That's never ever happened. So the issue of safety was dispelled. We have shown time and time again, that applies to the Planning Commission, and now here, speaking to you, without taking too much of your time, there was a letter that was written, which you got, from Mr. Hoops, who's the sheriff. And just really shortly to read you this, he says, it is my understanding the city of Victorville is currently evaluating the project of granting a conditional use permit for a day reporting center at the Sage address administered by the, by the county probation department. And lastly, he says, I firmly support the establishment of a probation department day reporting center in the high desert. And from my perspective, I believe that locating it near the Victorville courthouse would be the most logical, convenient, and efficient site for such a facility. I am very cognizant of the public safety issue involved, but with the Victorville Police Department, California Highway Patrol, and the Sheriff's Code Services located nearby, and probation officers stationed within the building itself, I am confident that any concerns about the safety, security of the area can be alleviated. I think, as you know, Sheriff Hoops would not have written that letter if he didn't believe in the probation department, and didn't believe in all these people who are here representing, telling you that if you give us the opportunity to do the right thing and to provide services for our clients, because our goal is, as this lady mentioned, is ultimate rehabilitation and reducing recidivism. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor McCaughern, councilmembers, we're back here on appeal. Why? Because there is no evidentiary, why? Because there is no evidentiary support for the purported findings of the staff which made them for the Planning Commission. This is a de novo review. This is not, why did the Planning Commission err? The duty of this council is to look at all the evidence anew, and I want to make sure that that standard is placed on the record. So I would disagree with what the council may want to hear and ask you to do the duty of a de novo review, that this applicant is entitled to. Otherwise, it's a violation of her due process. The issues that were raised at the Planning Commission were compatibility and safety. Probation services are professional services, they are not open to the consumers. This is not a business that has, would be considered one to be judged on a low volume of consumer traffic. These are professional services, people coming at appointed times for appointments, just like many other professional services in the area. We have shown that there are three compatible uses in the district, including the public defender, attorneys, bail bondsmen, private investigators, DUI classes, and small business classes. And why do I include the latter? Because we have shown that in the district, a CUP is permissible to allow business college classes to be held. Classes are given at this area, I don't even want to call them classes, there are meetings of 20 or so probation individuals in order to give them business skills, which is very commensurate with the small business center that's at 15490 Civic Drive. There's no intrusion of an incompatible use or a newer, different use into the zone, so it does not violate Objective 1.2 of the general plans. We have given you 50 letters of support, one from the sheriff, 41 from tenants in the area, and eight landowners. One at 15547 West Sand, who is present daily and does his business there. One at 14297 Cajon. One at 15428 Civic Drive, who is present on a daily basis. By the way, tenants from these locations have also signed support letters. One from 14467 Park Avenue, and I believe that's my partner, and his letter is duly important because he used to be located right across the street from existing probation and never had a problem. One from 14338 Park Avenue, who is a owner who's present on the premises every day doing business. 15497 West Sand, 15505 West Sand, and 15415 West Sand, all present on a daily basis. And all a nice buffer to the one objector who is at 154, well, it's the Caldwell Kennedy Law Firm. In any event, the second item was the issue of safety. We underscored that there are no incidents of, no reports or incidents at the existing probation officer. There are no police reports of incidents at any other location in the zone. Once again, there are 50 letters in support, 49 of which are people in the area who have no fears regarding that. You can't depy the landowner of the use of her building on the basis of capriciousness or caprice, whim, speculation, or fear. Fear of something that you don't know is going to happen in the future. When you regulate a land use, you can mitigate the fear or the risk of the future. And this council has the power to regulate that land use by a CUP. You can regulate the parking, you can regulate the traffic, you can regulate, you can put a watch on the activities there. You can adopt the alternative and go for an interim use permit, which would tie the precise use to the courthouse, because it's precisely the courthouse that makes this use so compatible to the area and with the existing professional offices in the area. But whatever decision the council makes, we would like one thing. Number one, if you're going to make a finding, that you place on the record your specific evidentiary findings of incompatibility, and you place on the record your specific evidentiary findings of the risk of safety. Because to date, there's been nothing but fear and speculation from the people who are opposed. And there has been lots of direct statements from people who have no history of any problems and who are desirable and have this use in the area and consider it positive, especially those property owners. Thank you.
Good evening, council and mayor. I was on the public comments, so I'm going to make a couple, just quick things to properly, Mr. Doug Robertson. But anyway, as regard to the wonderful, that was a great presentation he made, the engineer. But I just want to say that the two or three parallel parkings on C are not doing it. So, you know, there's more traffic coming in, we're getting more and more businesses coming into the town. So that's a good thing. And the colored crosswalks are not saving the people. They still don't see the people that, at 50, 60 miles an hour, coming down to D Street, they really don't see the people, and the lady has been hit and killed. So I think that's an important issue. The third one is, people do not want to park in the alley or behind any of the stores. They would prefer to park in front. And I do agree with the one-way park, the one-way down, if that would work. One-way might work, or, or a turn lane with, with just one parking on one side and another free lane. In other words, it would be two lanes and a middle turn lane. So anyway, whatever works is what we want. The other thing is, I'm talking about the parolees. We don't have an apartment in government that cares about counseling and rehabilitating released prisoners. Let's create a entity in Victorville that does something about it. They are here, they need help, and you heard her talk. That is just what we need in Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, my name is Jeannie Kennedy, and I appreciate that Diana Carloni introduced me to you in her little presentation. I am opposed, no doubt about it. And I don't believe that the, being a half a block away is a buffer by the buildings, excuse me, that are in between. When my partner and I bought that property and built that building in 1986, we complied with all the zoning rules. We didn't have to ask for a CUP or anything else to allow us to be there. All we are asking is that other people have to comply as well with the same rules that we've complied with for the last 26 years. This is not an issue of believing that people don't need a chance. That's not what this is about. This is not an issue of depriving somebody from, for the use of their property. I believe everybody should have the right to use their property within the rules, within the zoning rules. Safety is an issue for me. My clients are not criminal defendants. Most of them are elderly or older or business people who come to our office because we make a presentation that they want to take advantage of. I don't really want to have to have my clients drive through a neighborhood where there is loitering or a large amount of traffic. I don't want my staff that works a flexible schedule I don't want my staff that works a flexible schedule to be afraid of going home after dark in the wintertime. Fear is an issue. It truly is. And I don't want to be politically incorrect, but these people are probationers because they have committed crimes. They are out of jail because of the reduction in jail population. They do all deserve a chance. There has to be a place that is not a professional area populated by financial advisors, other lawyers besides myself, and engineers and other business people. I believe that the planning commission did not err and that you should uphold their decision.
Thank you. Phyllis Morris?
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Morris. First of all, I do want to say that in my experience as being an attorney, I know that laws, rules, and guidelines cannot be viewed in a vacuum. I know that there are exceptions, and I know that exceptions are based in equity. I was not at the planning commission meeting because unfortunately I was taking a midterm. However, I do want to say that when I go into cities and I look at what is in a courthouse district, I see attorney offices. In a lot of your cities, you don't have the public defender's office in the same building as the courthouse. So I see public defender's offices, district attorney, bail bonds, and a lot of court-related organizations. The courthouse is the center or the hub in this particular area, and businesses have developed to support that particular hub. And unfortunately, most of the cases at the courthouse happens to be criminal cases. I do believe that public safety was an important factor in the planning commission's decision. But what is interesting and important to understand is that, first of all, we've always had criminal cases before AB 109. Second of all, we've always had probationers before AB 109, and we will continue to have probationers even with AB 109. Probationers have reported into the probation officers, probationers have reported into their public defenders, probationers have reported into their private attorneys who have offices in that particular area. The distinction is being based on status, whether the individual is a convicted felon or whether the individual is an unconvicted felon, and I believe that that's an unfair status, because the reality is, is that our community is made up of a diversity of individuals. And just because a person made a mistake doesn't necessarily make them a criminal for lifetime. And I do appreciate your statement. So I just want, second, I do, there's another point that I would like to make, because I read a lot, I read paper every morning, is the second thing is that people who are coming out of state prison have served their time, and they're coming out now on post-release community supervision, whereas previously they would have came out on parole. The third thing that I want to say is that when you talk about rehabilitation, it's not just the availability of service, it's the accessibility of service. And the reality is, is that individuals, they must go to court, they must see their attorney, they must see their probationer. Why not also offer the service that will deal with the root of their problem? Rehabilitation. Rehabilitation is the key. If you're dealing with fear, talk about rehabilitation, because communities can change when they become involved in rehabilitation. Thank you.
Thank you. Gregory Zambrin?
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for listening to our comments today. I would ask that you deny the conditional use permit. I've been an attorney for twenty-five years exclusively based in the Civic Center. My father owns the building in which our business is operated out of. This isn't about, should we rehabilitate, should we not rehabilitate? It's about where. And it's not about the types of services so much as it is about the volume that we're talking about. As Ms. Kennedy stated, we located our business in an administrative professional district because of the zoning, because it's supposed to be for a relatively low volume of clients for that business. This, having up to a hundred and ninety criminals coming to and from a particular location every day is not a low volume. And I don't want my business near that, and I don't think any of you folks would want your business near where a hundred and ninety criminal defendants, whether they've served their time or otherwise, are going back and forth every day. And to echo what Ms. Kennedy said, many times, in the winter in particular, our elderly clients, well, I do a lot of elder law and family law, and the single mothers with their children and the elderly are often my clients. Are they going to feel comfortable at four-thirty, five o'clock at night when we're done, and the probation department also releases their folks, who many of them probably don't have transportation and will take the bus stop right across over here, and many of them are going to be walking across our lot, our parking lot, at the same time my clients leave in the evening? I'm even concerned, is this a liability issue? Do I need to warn my clients that, by the way, you know, don't talk to these folks? And I don't want to sound as if I'm promoting fear. I'm concerned about liability. I now know that there will be these folks walking across with a criminal history, walking across our property to get to and from the bus. I have a duty to warn of a known danger to my clients. Is that going to cause liability to me? But most importantly, are my clients going to feel comfortable? If they don't feel comfortable, I can't practice there. We need to maintain the image of the Civic Center as being administrative professional and not make an exception because one business owner would like to have their property rented, no one blames them. And not to make an exception for the probation department, there's a lot of empty buildings that are accessible to their clients. They don't have to be in a non-conforming use. Thank you very much.
Bud Gibbony? Is there a Bud here? Harry Justice?
Mayor, good evening, members of the city council. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this event. I'm a local business owner. I own a vacant lot and a commercial building in this area, and I moved in here because it was a professional district, and I moved in here because I thought it was a good area where I could build my business and build the type of clientele that I need to maintain my business. I employ seven people, including myself, in this area, and I'm happy to say that they have, their jobs are secure right now. The economy has dealt us a blow, all of us in this economy, all of my colleagues struggle to stay in business. And my thought is the impact of something like this is going to impact the productivity of my business, which is currently, it's stable, but anything could reduce business, and that's important to me, and that's why I came to this area. I also have safety concerns about the increased traffic and the safe, and the congestion in this area as well. Those are significant impacts to the economy here, because there's been no discussion of how the increased congestion would be addressed. I've heard a lot of emotional issues, a lot of emotional statements tonight, not so much rational. I've heard about how one individual rehabilitates, but I agree with my colleagues and local property owners here that this is not a question as to whether rehabilitation is needed. It's more of an issue of whether the planning commission erred and they did not. This is an appeal. This should not be a de novo review. This is where did the planning commission go wrong? I heard no law that would support that type of situation where you would have to review this de novo. I haven't heard very much statements out of anyone who's spoken about how the planning commission erred, which is the critical question here. Thank you.
Jennifer Maderos?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jennifer Maderos. I own the property located at 14390 Park Avenue. I'm just one vacant parcel away from the proposed project. I've spoken to you before regarding the issue of Walmart being built at Tamaras Marketplace. My arguments in opposition to that project are the same two arguments in opposition to this project. The land is not zoned for the use, and the safety of the surrounding property owners, clients, and staff is at risk. There are more suitable places to locate this project. I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to build my law office five years ago, with the understanding that my office would be surrounded by similarly used buildings. I assume much thought was put into the planning of the city of Victorville. The city was planned for certain areas to have certain uses, and we need to follow that plan. I've lived and worked in Victorville for twenty-three years, and I plan to continue to do so. Let's not turn our neighborhood into a hodgepodge of whatever flows, but rather let's stick to the planning and zoning that was set out and allow development to occur in its proper place. I don't want to have one hundred and seventy-five or one hundred and ninety probationers around my parking lots, my staff, and my clients every day, just as I don't want to have a super Walmart in the front yard of my home. Our city is large. There is room for all growth. Just follow the plan, keep everything in its proper zone. Kudos to Vicky for making a change and taking advantage of the rehabilitation programs that the probation department provides. Those are great programs, but they need to be located in the proper place. I'm here to tell you that the planning commission got it right. I urge you to deny this project. Thank you.
Jim Schroder?
Good evening, councilmen and women, woman. My name is Jim Schroder, and I did turn in a letter. I hope all of you have read it. That states my position pretty well. And in fact, most of the property owners that got up and spoke tonight, with maybe the exception of one or two, had to be aware that the probation department's been in the position they are on Civic Drive for over twenty years. Now, I guess I would ask all of them, did they investigate that, to see if there was a fear factor or something that would cause them to not want their, you know, put their property where it's at right now? So that's what I want to state right there. You've seen my letter, and that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have at this time. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing on Agenda...and then Agenda item, thirteen. Sorry, I'm looking at two different agendas here. And I'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
If I might, Mayor McHachrin, I just want to clarify a few points. There's been a discussion as to the standard of review. Essentially, this body, considering this item, you have before you a very complete record of both planning commission actions on this item, as well as the prior appeal process. Traditionally, in an appellate-type review, you would look at the entire record and see if the underlying body considered all of the information and made its determination based on the record and was justified in coming to that decision. However, pursuant to the municipal code here, you do essentially have the same thing as a trial de novo. You are allowed to consider all of the new evidence, and you have the ability to modify the decision, to approve the decision, or to overturn the decision. You can reverse, affirm, or modify. So you do essentially have a lot of discretion. You have before you, like I said, a complete and a very comprehensive administrative record on which to make the decision. You know how the planning commission decided. There are a lot of findings and determinations throughout the record that they based their decisions on, so it's really up to you on how you want to proceed.
Can we wait till June and make a decision then? Much like the Supreme Court.
You could continue the item, but you will notice, especially from staff report with respect to the findings and determinations, there are enumerated there the justifications and the reasons for the planning commission's decisions. And it's based on, is this the right location for that type of use? It's not as to, is this an appropriate use and not an appropriate use? Is this the appropriate location for it?
All right. Well, I'll open this up to council discussion. Is there any comments, questions?
You know, we were given a terrible situation when Governor Brown made the decision to release these inmates early. I don't feel that the governor prepared the cities well enough for what's coming. I mean, we, if you read the paper today or online paper, you'll see that the crime has increased here in the Victor Valley. And whether, you know, we know it or not, or people know it or not, we are surrounded with ex-falons, probationers, and people who have been in trouble with the law. And, you know, to say that you're going to be more unsafe, you're probably next to one now. And it's rhetoric. We have to deal with it, and location is important to the success of probationers. They don't have vehicles, they don't have jobs, they don't have money. So if they're not making their probation, their classes, their court, they're going back to jail, that's more taxpayer money out of our pocket, and their crimes are just going to keep compounding. So we need to deal with it. Rehabilitation is necessary for a city to stay safe. If there's no classes for these individuals, they don't even know how to parent, they don't know how to deal with their anger, they don't know how to get a job, to even apply for a driver's license. They need these classes to be successful and to reintegrate into the community. Do you want to live next to somebody who's had no rehabilitation or someone who's just been incarcerated and warehoused? And trust me, as a former prison warden, you want them to be rehabilitated. Unemployment rate in Victorville is, what is it, like fourteen percent in Victorville? It's almost double what the national average is. Having this here, it's going to bring jobs, and I mean good jobs, it's going to bring sworn peace officers to Victorville and to this area to make it safer. With all of that said, I would like to make a motion to give them a temporary use permit. And if they can't handle their business and everything that everyone is afraid of is happening, we kick them out.
Hey, well, I think I'd like to give the rest of the council an opportunity to chime in, but I also would like to turn to staff on, is that possible? So while we give the other council members a chance to talk about that, I want to know if that's possible.
Well, yeah, I would be against a temporary permit. You know, temporary things have a way of becoming permanent, so you either do it or you don't. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, this went back to the planning, it was first by the planning commission, came to us, we heard testimony, it went back to the planning commission, and both times it came back five-oh to deny. So, you know, I'm not going to second-guess the planning commission. I've read the information. They made a decision based on land use, and so I'm going to support their decision.
First of all, property has been zoned and rezoned over the years because land use conditions changed as the community grows and impacts into it. So nothing is immutable in that respect. Certainly, the internal uses, whether it's a basic commercial use or residential use or some of those real fundamental changes, those always go back to those three-month general plan amendments that we usually deal with from time to time, and it's pretty extensive. But there's a lot of review by the planning commission. Then you get into those unique property uses, and to Vicky, that's a great program. I tell you, I mean, I appreciate it. I mean, I feel safer with those programs in play. I truly do. But my decision is not going to be made based on the program. The program is a great program, and I'm not making a decision based on that. I'm looking at what the planning commission has done, and I'm looking at that review process that we depend on as a council each time. And with that, I have not seen yet the reason why we should overrule a majority vote and in fact if I... fact, a 5-0 vote, on the planning commission each time through. They have reviewed those programs. And I don't believe that there is anything that was an aspersion on the programs. I thank God for the programs. But the property out there has been reviewed twice by the planning commission, and I do not feel comfortable overruling that process. And just for my personal note, I think there are other alternatives out here. Maybe after this review process comes to an end, one way or the other, that you might look at those other options. But at the moment, as we're sitting right here, Victorville is not the only option to expanding the program out here. And quite frankly, anybody that doesn't believe that we are not going to expand our probation programs here and other places has got their head in the sand. They know exactly what's going on in this state. And it's an incredible thing, but it's all coming down to the local level. So we have to very carefully couch our decision makings and respect that mission that is going to be dropped down here at the local levels. But as I sit here right now, I feel comfortable that the planning commission has reviewed this twice, and they have made their decision, and I am not prepared to overrule that. So that's where I stand on it.
Well, having sat in a planning commission chair and chair of the planning commission for four years, this is a very difficult thing to have to deal with because some of the very rules that we put in place while I was there, I'm dealing with now, i.e. the whole reason that term limits don't really work. You have to be able to deal with the decisions you make down the road. And so here I am faced with having to deal with making a decision based upon land use policies that we put into place when I was chairman of the planning commission. The fact of the matter is, is that over the last two years, I've been approached by several businesses in the social services sector wanting to locate in that area. They are not allowed. They're not administratively approved. They are prohibited from locating in that sector. And so how do I explain to those very institutions that provide great services to the social service sector of our community, not just Victorville, but the entire Victor Valley, that it wasn't okay for them to locate in this area, but it would be okay for the probation department to move over? That absolutely makes no sense. I disagree on the aspect of the fact that we could just make a decision tonight based upon that the planning commission did not err. I think the planning commission had two hearings, two public hearings, and they went through the due process. And for us as a council to ignore our own planning commissioners that we appoint, then why would we have a planning commission in the first place? Doesn't make any sense. So the planning commission serves a role to this city, to this council, and there's a reason that land use decisions go through them. Yes, they can be appealed to this council, but on a 5-0 vote twice, they denied this use, it's very difficult for this council to ignore that. And so for those two reasons, there's no way that I could vote to grant the appeal because it doesn't make any sense when you have a planning commission that the five members of this council have appointed, 5-0 denied it two times before two public hearings. So we do have a motion on the floor. I will entertain, if there's a second to that motion. Seeing none, I will entertain another motion.
Mayor McEcrin, if I might, just for the clarification of the record, there's been a question as to the standard of review. It is not whether or not the planning commission erred. Certainly, you are allowed to defer to and look at their decision-making process and essentially agree with their decision-making process. But under the municipal code, you do have the ability to basically treat this as a trial de novo. That's just set forth in your municipal code. It is no longer the standard of review, just whether they erred or not. So you certainly can defer to their judgment, however.
Well, and I think that that was my point. I don't know if the other council members want to chime in on that, but we don't have a planning commission for nothing. Otherwise, if we have a planning commission and we're not going to uphold their decisions, especially on a 5-0 vote, then why do they exist? Why don't we just make all those decisions here at the council level?
Well, I don't necessarily...
Correct. And most of... Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I don't necessarily agree with that because it's like we have three branches of government. It's called checks and balances.
The point I wanted to make is that at the planning commission, I'd say 70, 80, maybe 90% of the information that you received tonight was before the planning commission. You may have received, and there have been some additional letters. So that gives you the ability to adjust or make a decision based on additional information. But I think most of the information seems to be consistent with what was previously presented at the planning commission.
I move Resolution Number 12-009, deny.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the administrative record, for that motion, would it be okay to clarify the motion to actually include the findings that are located in the staff report? That is what the council is also basing its determination on, are those findings that are located in the staff report?
I'll defer to those who made the motion in the second. Is that your understanding of your motion, your second? All right, so let the record reflect that.
Your clarification, it's only the findings that are listed in the staff report. Is that correct? There's no other findings made by this council? Am I understanding correctly? Mr. Cabralis made the motion.
This is part of it? This would be similar to what other information they received?
Yes, you have the findings and determinations made in the staff report and any additional findings and determinations you may wish to make at this time. You can add those as well.
Well, I don't know if it's part of the motion, but my comments would be on the record as to the other uses that we're trying to locate in that area. How could that not be a part of the issue?
And that's what you're basing your decision on, is that correct?
That's how I based my decision tonight.
Thank you. That's what I'm asking for. What is this decision based on? Thank you.
That's how I based my decision. I don't know about the others. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 15, Consent Calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Agenda Item Number 16 is request for council to adopt Resolution Number 12-014 titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Amending Traffic Regulations of Certain Streets Within the City by Establishing a Four-Way Stop at the Intersection of Spring Valley Parkway and Franciscus Road."
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Agenda Item Number 17 is request for council to make appointments to the oversight boards of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority, v. as follows. Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Mr. Doug Robertson, our city manager; Mr. Sean McGlade, our city engineer; Mr. Keith Metzler, our assistant city manager; and to the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority, Mr. Doug Robertson, our city manager.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if I might, just before taking action, with respect to the Victorville RDA appointment, particularly Mr. Sean McGlade, the staff report identifies that his appointment would be serving in the capacity of the largest special district, which at the time of the drafting of this document was believed and as of this moment is believed to be the largest special district, though I am aware that the county has a different interpretation as to the methodology used to determine who the largest special district is. So they're believing that it's the county flood control district. I think, from what I'm hearing, up and down the state, that this is not an uncommon debate. But notwithstanding that, I want to disclose that for the record. And if it is determined that, in fact, flood control for the county is the largest special district, then Mr. McGlade's appointment would then just drop off. But I am advising that if these candidates before you are acceptable, that we go ahead and approve them in the entirety, with that caveat that there is a chance that Mr. McGlade's appointment might fall off.
I have a question for the attorney. This is an oversight board.
That's correct. It's mandated by Assembly Bill 26, which was the bill that dissolved redevelopment agencies. That bill specifically sets forth the way to set up oversight boards and defines, to some extent, their roles and functions, although there's a lot of questions as to what exactly they're supposed to do.
Okay. And then we put our city staffers on there. I mean, it just seems like we're putting the fox in charge of the hen house. I mean...
The oversight board is made up of seven different individuals. One's going to be selected by the county supervisor, one by the superintendent of schools, one by the community college district person. I think there's one public at large. There's one that represents the employees of the redevelopment agency. There is one that is appointed by the mayor of the city as a successor entity, and there is one that represents the largest taxing entity. So even though there's only three with respect to the redevelopment agency, they will be in the minority potentially of the oversight board. Seven-member board.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
On Agenda Item Number 18, I am going to abstain as there are certain agencies on this list that do business with my insurance agencies, so...
Okay. Item 18 is a request to, number one, adopt the HCD Grants Review Committee recommendations as presented to be included into the action plan that will be submitted to Department of Housing and Urban Development, and two, to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents before it's submitted to Hutton. And we do have a list of all the applications and the ones that were granted the funds.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Mayor McEcrin and Councilmember Kennedy absent.
I'd like to thank staff also for helping us make that selection with all the information. It was really quite easy when you give us all the information, and we can make those decisions. So thank you very much.
All right, and we'll now move into council committee reports. Mr. Rothschild?
I have none.
All right. Ms. Vias?
Victor Valley Transit Authority's grand opening, April 20th at 11:00 a.m. There's going to be a sandbag meeting there and a tour. The building is green, so it has a lot of neat features that I think you might be interested in.
I don't have any report.
All right, discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Ms. Vias?
Yes. I was wondering if we give the option of going green on our billing. Maybe that'll help with some...
Yeah, we're actually looking into that with the new Munis software. We're hoping we can incorporate that, as well as some of the combined billings that some of our public commenters talked about earlier.
And then maybe where you just take it out of the account automatically?
I would love to do that. That's one of our goals, certainly.
Okay.
So that will come, you're going to be bringing something back to us?
That's something that's happening as we speak, those types of things, yeah.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to have this agendized to modify our rules for having council members place items on the agenda to allow the mayor of the city to place items on the agenda unilaterally. So that would be what I would like agendized, since it's a council policy, we need to tee it up and vote on it at a council meeting. But my request is to modify it simply to have the mayor as the only one that can unilaterally... The rest of us have to go through the same process we've already got, but whoever sits in the mayor's seat has the ability to tee up an item on his own or her own.
So this is for us to discuss?
Yeah, to put on the next agenda.
All right. All right. I know it's being discussed, and I believe Angela and I are going to be attending a meeting on Thursday night, but there's a synthetic drug ordinance that is supposed to be coming before this council. I know the sheriff's department is working on that. So I just hope that we would see that pretty soon. I know that's a pretty big problem up here in the high desert, and we're going to hear more about that on Thursday. So, but that's something that I believe the sheriff's department's going to bring to us, from what I understand. So, all right, report from staff and council members. Mr. Robertson?
Staff has no additional comments.
I just have a comment. Earlier, a gentleman talked about Cesar Chavez and, you know, almost made him sound like un-American. Well, as a matter of fact, Cesar Chavez was born here in the United States. He wasn't American. He also served in World War II in the Navy, so he was also a veteran. And that's just for the record.
Well, I'm Scottish, and I have some German in me, and I'm also Jewish. So, I mean, come on. We're all from different backgrounds, and I think that we ought to be able to celebrate our backgrounds. But with that, we are adjourned.